The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Alderman Clemens will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
People need to mute. As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing WebEx through the city's IT department for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board of Aldermen have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen to this meeting through dialing the following number: (978) 990-5298 and using the password (273) 974. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. We are also providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. We've been providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting that if there are problems with access, anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call (603) 821-2049, and they will help you connect. Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. We'll start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting who can hear us, which is required under the right to know law. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I am home alone, and I can hear you.
Alderman Clea.
I am present. I can hear everybody. I am in the room alone at the moment. But as I say, my grandhounds and husband could be here at any point.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I am here. I am alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Dowd.
I'm here. I'm alone. I can hear you, and practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's instructions.
Alderman Karen. I'll come back to Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemens. Alderman Lopez.
I'm here. I'm alone. I'm socially distancing.
Alderman Tenza.
I am present. I can hear everybody, and I am alone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I am here. I can hear you, and I'm alone.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here. I'm alone in the room, and I can hear you.
Alderman Schmidt.
I'm here. I can hear you all, and you might hear my bird, who is the only one with me.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Cleaver.
Here and alone in the room.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
I am present. I am alone, but there's others in the home.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I am here. I am home alone. I can hear everyone, and I am staying home per the Governor's orders.
I didn't hear Alderman Karen or Alderman Clemens. I know they were anticipating for the special meeting. Can you hear us? Are they on? Show 12 in attendance.
Thank you. Also with us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches, Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Is John Griffin with us tonight? Police Chief Mike Carrigan. I see Deputy Chief Tom Tisberdy is with us.
Good evening.
Cummings is also with us. Bobby Bagley is with us. Did I miss anyone? Okay, very good. Mayor, did you wish to address the board? You're on mute, Mayor.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam President. I was going to mention a few things. First of all, on your desks, or at least your virtual desks, there should be a resolution for introduction for first reading under a suspension of the rules. This pertains to Main Street, would give the Community Development Director the ability to alter temporarily site plans regarding the outdoor dining features of various restaurants, so that we could help to accommodate them in expanding their outdoor space. Some of the board members have participated in a few telephone conferences we've had in the last week or so, a little bit more, regarding the possibility of expanding the area that retail and restaurants could use by using the one lane on each side of the road, narrowing the street to one lane in each direction, and including some different parking. Those are plans that will be coming forward, but we are working with some Aldermen and others downtown, a lot of downtown discussions with the specific businesses. And of course, our overall goal here is to help build a stronger business climate, stronger economy downtown, coming out of the as we emerge from the coronavirus epidemic and as restaurants can begin to serve people, at least outdoor. Of course, we still need to be careful. We shouldn't, we need to open when it's safe to open. Safety should be number one. On that score, Madam President, there have been some some research recently that's come out very recently suggesting that wearing the masks, even homemade masks, is very helpful in curtailing the spread of COVID-19. And the research is showing that the virus is more likely to be spread through the mist that is emitted when someone is talking or lightly coughing, because it remains in the air, more likely than the droplets they were talking about at the beginning of the epidemic. And therefore, the research is saying that masks are going to be much more effective, are much more effective than originally was thought. So there are a few things that are going on with respect to that. First of all, the Board of Public Health is meeting tomorrow, and will be considering a requirement that people who visit stores, restaurants, and indoor business establishments, customers, wear a mask when they make such a visit. You may recall that the Governor's orders require now, as there's some gradual opening taking place, that the Governor's orders require that the workers in these establishments wear masks. But right now, there's no state requirement that the customers wear them. The Board of Health is going to be considering such a requirement. Now, it's Steve Bolton's analysis, Attorney Bolton's analysis, that in order to enforce such a requirement, there would need to be action by the Board of Public Health, which later would have to be confirmed by the Board of Aldermen. So depending on what the Board of Health discusses and decides upon tomorrow, it's possible that the requirement of masks indoors would come to the Board of Aldermen, and obviously, we will keep you informed and provide more detail when and if that happens. Also, the Rotary Club, National Rotary Club, in conjunction with the owners of the Common Man Restaurant, are cooperating to distribute masks to the public at Nashville South this coming Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. This is something that the owners of Common Man procured, I think, 70,000 masks down in Central America, and they have done this up north of Concord, and so they're going to try it in Nashville with our Rotary Club, and see, and then distribute as many masks as they can on each of those days. So if anyone is interested in that, you should check out the details and go to Nashville South during the hours that they're open. Also, Alderman Lopez kindly arranged the sewing of, I believe, about 100 or more masks. He had asked me, and I didn't have a chance to get back to him today, where those could be dropped off for the city. If you, Alderman Lopez, go to the side door of City Hall anytime during business hours during the week, ring the bell, someone will come and take the masks, and they will be put to good use, and we greatly appreciate your help with putting these together. Finally, or another issue on the COVID-19 virus, we talked before about all of the people in the city, public health, emergency management, and everybody who are working very hard to keep our community, our residents, safe. They're doing an extremely good job, and we've discussed that before. They are based upon what the tests they've been allocated, that's Public Works, have conducted a lot more tests recently than they could, than they were allowed to earlier on, a month or three or four weeks ago. Last week, they did several clinics. They've been conducting a lot of tests, and therefore, people who think they would like, and the criteria have broadened considerably, anybody who thinks they would like to be tested, especially if you're over 60, should call the COVID-19 hotline, which is (589) 3456. Just briefly, there are, right now, as of this morning, about 316 cases that have been tested in Nashville. 100 of those are still active. Most have recovered. Unfortunately, eight people in Nashville have passed away from coronavirus, and there are a number of people who are hospitalized right now. But we're keeping our fingers crossed and praying for those who have gotten that disease, especially those who are hospitalized with very serious symptoms. Finally, Madam President, I thought I would mention on the this non-COVID front, that the master plan interviews for the master plan consultants have gone forward, will be coming to the board with a recommendation. Of course, the master plan, master planning exercise requires a lot of public input, and so you don't know what's going to happen. There's a lot of uncertainty, of course. We don't know when and how that master planning exercise would proceed, but we think we should put the consultant in place and then work with them and with public health, and of course, do the master plan with public safety and the safety of our employees in mind. Though I could go on about more of the COVID-19 issues, but I think I've covered some of the more prominent ones right now. So, Madam President, unless there are questions, I will turn it back over to you.
Responses to the remarks of Mayor? No. Okay.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens?
Yes, I just wanted to let you know that I was on the call. I don't know what trouble was before, but I am here and present.
Thank you, Alderman Clemens.
Alderman Karen here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Alderman Karen.
Okay, I was here also. I don't know what happened, so.
Very good. Thank you.
And Alderman Harry.
Alderman Clea?
I'm sitting here. I just wanted to thank the Mayor for going forward and working with public health, and I look forward to something coming to the Board of Aldermen about wearing masks indoors. I'm not sure necessarily restaurants would be plausible, but for malls and so on, I think it's a good idea. And I can tell you that I've signed on to a letter to ask the Governor to do it throughout our state also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else responsive to the remarks of Mayor?
Yes, Linda.
Alderman Gathright.
Thank you. I am happy that we're considering that, the masks, that people wear masks, because, to be honest with you, if I go into market, and typically, it's usually at X one, there are quite a few people there that come through there, and no mask. They don't follow the directions of how the aisle is supposed to, the direction you should go in an aisle. And so, it's been a challenge, to be honest with you, here in Nashville. So I'm very happy that we're even considering that Nashville becomes a mass city, and particularly because we're a border town. And I personally feel as though every border town at least should be a mass city. That's it. Thank you, Mayor, for considering.
Yep, I just wanted to comment about the masks. So the 100 masks I have are made by the Girl Scouts, and they're leftover after we got masks for all of the shelters, all of the residential programs, all of the group homes. So there's a huge capacity of volunteer mask makers in Nashville. Lotte Menjapooti's been putting out like 300 or 400 a day. So Alderman Kelly and I had talked about the possibility of mandatory masks back when we thought Reverend Sanunu was going to do that. But if we do it at the city level, we could work on getting volunteers to produce masks so that we can give them out to police or anybody who's likely to, business owners, so that there isn't any kind of economic barrier to getting masks. But I just wanted to comment that there is the ability to help each other out. There is plenty of willingness and interest in doing so. So if we did move forward with the masking plan, it wouldn't be targeting people unfairly. We could make sure that everybody gets a chance to do it.
Thank you very much, Alderman Lopez. That will be, of course, very helpful.
Anyone, any other remarks to the response to the remarks by the Mayor? Seeing none. Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meetings of April 28th. A fourth accepted placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring early travel actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Reverend Sarah Sally Newhall regarding proposed full street flats.
There being no objection, I will accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. The public has access to contemporaneously listen into this meeting through dialing the following number: (978) 990-5298 and using the password (273) 974. The public may also view this meeting on Channel 16. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call (603) 821-2049, and they will help you connect. You also submit your comments via email, which will be accepted and placed on file with the minutes of the meeting. Please email your comments to boa@nashuanh.gov. Communications requiring final approval?
There are none.
Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
There are none.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the April 27, 2020 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the April 29 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 5 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 6 Finance Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the May 7, 2020 Budget Review Committee accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Human Affairs Committee meeting held Monday night regarding proposed Resolution 20-31. Alderwoman Kelly? Alderwoman Kelly? Did you want to give an oral report of the resolution from last night?
Yes, it was not last night. I was trying to remember what we talked about. I'm sorry. It's been a long day. And I was stuck on mute. Just give me one moment.
Okay.
I didn't realize you were going to have me do an oral report. I'm sorry. I was not quite prepared. So we met last night. It was a quick meeting, but we discussed, that's right. We discussed the the money for the police department to allow them to take in the supplemental emergency funding. The police department is talking about getting up to three outfits per police officer, as well as other measures to keep them safe during COVID-19. So it passed unanimously, and the police were great in explaining what the money was going to go to. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of Mayor's appointments?
There are none.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of Resolution R 2030 relative to the transfer of $10,000 within Department 156, Emergency Management, from account 54407, Software Maintenance, to account 51300, Payroll Overtime.
Alderman Schmidt?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of Resolution 20-030 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Lou, do you have your hand up? Alderman Lou?
I just had a question. Is that payroll overtime account in the Emergency Management Division?
I couldn't hear you, Alderman Lou. I'm sorry.
First of all, thank you.
You're welcome.
My question was, is the payroll overtime account that the funds would be directed to, 51300, is that a general fund account, or is it earmarked specifically to the Emergency Management Division?
I don't know the answer to that. Mr. Griffin, do you know the answer to that question?
Thank you, Madam President. That fund is included in the Emergency Management budget. What we are doing is transferring money from a non-salary account, Software Maintenance, which was the form of code name, into that particular overtime account within Emergency Management.
Thank you. I think I'm still learning. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on the motion for final passage? Seeing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd. Alderman Karen.
That was a yes, by the way. I have a problem with the mute button.
Alderman Karen. Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Sorry, yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
May I call for Alderman Karen again?
Please do.
Alderman Karen? You have 13 yeas and zero nays.
Hello, can you hear me?
Cam now.
We couldn't. Alderman Karen?
I'm sorry. I keep losing you. I'm sorry. Mine was a yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And Go ahead.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays now.
And Resolution 2030 is declared duly adopted. Madam Clerk?
Yeah, I'm looking. Are you suspending the rules for a second reading on Act 2031? Or am I going to 34?
I guess. Alderwoman Kelly, do you have a motion?
A motion to suspend the rules and and for final passage of Act 2031.
Motion is to suspend the rules for a second reading of Resolution 2031 by roll call. Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
What is 31?
It was the piece of legislation I just spoke about to give funding to the police station for COVID-19.
Thank you. Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays. Second reading of Resolution R 2031 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $122,122 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Justice into police grant activity 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Fund, CESF program.
Alderwoman Kelly?
I move for final passage of Act 20031.
Motion is for final passage. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none. Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
And I didn't hear Alderman Kelly's vote?
Me neither.
Oh, that's weird. I said yes.
Thank you. You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries.
I'm sorry.
2031 is declared duly adopted.
I'm sorry. I lost my page. I apologize. We have a second reading of Resolution R 2034 approving the cost items of sidebar agreements between the National Board of Police Commissioners and the five National Police Department Unions regarding a police department recruiting initiative.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes, I move for final passage of Resolution 20-034 by roll call. And I'd like to be heard on it.
Alderman Jettie?
So I noticed that Deputy Testaverde is here. He could probably explain this better than I can. So could, is it okay to ask him to talk about this, or do you want me to just say what I know about it?
We could ask him if you prefer to do that. Alderman Jettie?
I'm sure. I'm sure he would be better qualified.
Thank you, Alderman Jettie. Madam President, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'll try to be brief. It's difficult for me at times. I was before you, many of you, last summer telling you that we were down approximately 20 officers, and the air mark could be down 22. Right around September, we changed personnel and professional standards out of their primary responsibilities as recruitment, and took a whole new look at how we had been doing it for decades and did a huge transformation. One of the outside-the-box things that they came up with was this recruitment incentive program. We're able to do it totally within our own budget. And basically what it is, is if a member of the agency does a face-to-face in-person handoff with a potential candidate, police officer, or dispatcher, because those are the two areas we were really suffering with personnel retention. And that candidate is successfully hired by us, that person doing the recruitment will receive a $500 incentive. And again, it's all within our current budget. We're not asking for any additional funds. I can tell you, very proud of the work they've done since January of this year. Up until a couple weeks ago, we have sworn in 51 officers and added three people who communicate dispatch. So it's working. Two of those people were part of this program. But it's a full-court press with hiring right now, and obviously, we have not lowered our standards.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Alderman Cleese?
Madam President, when this came in front of the finance committee, I believe it was, I commented that when I worked for the Department of Veterans Affairs, we had a very difficult time getting nursing staff. It wasn't the RNs as much as it was the LNA's and nursing assistance, that we had a hard time. But one of the things that they did to be creative was employees that, as in this case, passed on a viable candidate that was hired, we gave them, I think at that point it was like a $50 bonus, a $150 bonus. It worked phenomenally, and in the long run, it was worth it, as well as a bonus is given to those that came on board too. So I think this is a good idea.
Any other discussion on this motion?
Yes.
Alderman Gathright?
My question with this is that I know that we're looking, we realize that sometime we have friends and family members and everything that know different people that might be interested. I'm more interested in the diversity piece of that. So is there anything special going out in terms of that $500 that you're looking for people of color, because you know, we all know that we just don't have an on-out police department that represent this city? So I would appreciate it if you didn't include that, that that's a part of it.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Alderman Gathright. The $500 is for any candidate. It's not directed specifically at any one group, one class, or one structure. What I can tell you is, I know you are very familiar with how passionately Chief Carrigan is with working with the community. And one of the things I have witnessed firsthand in some of our meetings with community members and some of the leaders in the minority community is the chief telling those members that not only is this a priority for him, but he's also turning it back to these community leaders and asking them to be our recruitment officers. And I've watched him do that several times. So it's 100% priority for us as far as this program. It basically doesn't say, if you bring in someone, it's $500 if they're a minority. It doesn't matter, right? No, we're just looking for quality candidates. And I would, if I may, very, very briefly, you mentioned, you know, people bringing in friends. I can say another thing, which I don't think it would surprise anyone here. It's the two, we have had two people successfully recruit people. We've had numerous people bring potential candidates in that just haven't met our standards. To include myself, that I taught classes at Riviera University, and what looks like a potential good candidate for me when I turn them over, and I let professional standards got to do their digging. We just, you know, I can't know every student that I teach. So we still are doing our due diligence, so it's not a good old boys' system.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Being none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution 20-34 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances?
There are none.
New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution R 2036 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $2,92,948 from the State of New Hampshire Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, to cover eligible COVID-19-related expenses.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for second reading of Act 20036 by roll call.
You've heard the motion? The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly? Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final of Act 20036 by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it for one moment.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, this is one of the efforts, many efforts, to get the city reimbursed for some of our COVID-19 expenses, and I would recommend passage.
Okay, is there any discussion, any further discussion on Resolution 20-36? Being none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt? Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
And Resolution 2036 is declared duly adopted.
First reading of Resolution R 2037 authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a contract with the Sohigan Valley Transportation Collaborative Transit Services.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien?
Alderman Karen.
Cleese? Alderman Karen?
Harriet Gathright.
Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Dowd? Okay. Alderman Lopez, thank you.
Alderman Cleaver.
Alderman Cleaver. Anyone else? Okay, given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R 2038 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of up to $830,000 from the State of New Hampshire Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, for the first responder COVID-19 stipend program.
Additional sponsors? Schmidt? Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Kelly, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cleese?
Alderman Cleaver.
Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Clemmons?
Harriet Gathright.
Alderman Harriet Gathright. Anyone else? Okay, Alderman Clemmons, do you have a motion?
Yes, I would like to suspend the rules for second reading of Act 2038 by roll call.
The motion is to suspend the rules. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien? Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly? Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Sorry, yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
May I call Alderman O'Brien one more time? I didn't hear him.
Thank you. I vote yay. My button was misbehaving badly.
Thank you. You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
Madam Clerk, was that to suspend, or was that final passage?
That was to suspend for the second reading.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. I would move for final passage of Act 2038 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Act 28 by roll call. Discussion.
Madam Clerk, could one of the officers just explain, or could someone explain a little bit about this particular? Are there any strings attached?
To my knowledge, Alderman Lou, there are no strings attached on this legislation. The first responders are, it's a stipend that I believe the state is paying that comes through the state from the federal government, and they are able to get refunds or paid back from either the state or the federal government for paying, I think it's $300 a week for full-time employees and 150 a week for part-time employees who are frontline employees.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else? Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, according to the brief that we got about it, it says, "The qualified individual must be engaged in the first responder activity that requires him to interact in person with the public or be out among general public. Individuals are ineligible for the stipend if the role, not in their normal course of business, require them to be in a physical contact with the public." I happen to be getting some of that myself, since I work with the emergency room discharges, and you have to document your time pretty carefully. And it does say that this will be audited for compliance.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Any other discussion? Being none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2038 is declared duly adopted. New business ordinances?
President Wiltshire, I believe you're looking for a motion to suspend for a first reading?
I am. I'm looking for, while there being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for a first reading of ordinance 2014?
First reading of ordinance 02014 relative to temporary adjustment to site plans.
Okay. I'm sorry. I just lost it. Are we looking to do a sec, just a first reading this evening?
Just a first reading this evening. You may want to ask for additional sponsors.
Yes, thank you.
Schedule the public hearing. Refer to committee and to the planning board.
Okay.
Isolation is taking its toll.
Are there additional sponsors? Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Cleese, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd? Anyone else? Okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign this to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the planning board, and we'll hold a special Board of Alderman meeting to hold a public hearing to be scheduled at a future date. Alderman O'Brien, did you want to work with infrastructure with P E D C on this legislation?
Thank you, Madam President. I look forward to the opportunity, and I'll talk to the Chair, Tenzer, about that matter. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll refer to infrastructure as well. Thank you. Period for general public comment.
How would they do that?
Nothing has been received. No comments have been received, President Wiltshire.
Remarks by members of the board? Alderman Lou?
Let her ring.
You're muted, Alderman Lou.
Sorry. Sorry about that. Thank you. First of all, did we vote on that?
No, we sent it to committee.
Okay. Okay. Right, you're right. Okay. My question is, aren't there, aren't there several community committees we've seen? My question is, aren't there, aren't there several communications we've received, and I just thought that they would be submitted into the minutes here?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you very well, Alderman Lou, I don't know if you.
Sorry about that, is this better?
That's better, yeah.
Okay. I have received five communications in the last week from residents, and I think all of them asked that we included in the minutes, so I'm wondering about them at this point. Are they, are they being submitted? Robert Lembry, Robert Dutsas, Mr. Sutton, Ms. Ordolano, and Laura. I think they were all sent to the same.
They're all sent what?
You can't hear me?
I can barely hear you. Oh, okay. You're talking about some communications that you've received that aren't on the agenda?
Um, yeah, they, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now, you're closer to the mic, I think.
They were sent to the B O A, and I thought they would be included in the, you know, put on file.
They, they will be, if they received after Wednesday, they won't go on until our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay? You're welcome. Alderman Lopez.
Oh, just to clarify, there is one communication in our agenda, which was dated before our last meeting, from Reverend Newhall. I'm sorry, Reverend Sarah Sally, and then Newhall, 33 Digital Drive, I see it on my agenda at least, but it was, it was regarding the Broad Street flats, or the School Street flats, and then it says, it was sent Monday, April 27.
Okay, I'm not sure why it didn't make it on the agenda, but we'll make sure it gets posted there.
Okay, I think it is.
We accepted that.
Yeah.
And it sounds before our previous meeting, so that's why it's on this week.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President, I just want to, I had commented at the beginning, thanking the mayor for bringing forward about wearing the mask to indoor places, but I'd also like to commend everybody for all the work that they're doing for the temporary altering of site plans and changing of Main Street. We all know that we're going to have to change as we go forward, and I just want to thank everybody for that, so.
And Alderwoman Kelly.
Uh, yes, thank you. Sorry for the intrusion by miles. I have a couple of comments, one was about the mask as well, I appreciate the mayor and the Board of Health considering putting a mandate in for that. I think that the slow reopening has made people feel a little bit optimistic, and I want to be optimistic too, but I want to caution people that they continue to be vigilant, so we don't see a spike here in Nashua. The other thing I wanted to comment on was the work that's being done for downtown businesses and businesses in general. I've been working with Director Cummings and Director Marchand, Alderman Clemmons, and we've had multiple conversations about making sure that we get the support to our downtown businesses and business owners as they kind of go through this, whether that's helping with rent or helping them to rejigger their outdoor seating. We've done a lot of work, and I commend everybody at the city who's done such a great job with the COVID Relief Fund. I've personally talked to five or six different business owners just to hear what they're going through and make sure that we're addressing that, because that's, you know, I don't want to see our downtown go dark, so, thank you for everyone on their efforts on that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman O'Brien.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. May 8th, I attended a 3 o'clock meeting hosted by Community Development, Economic Development Director, Mr. Cummings, and many of the stakeholders from the downtown were present at that meeting, and the conversation centered around the opening up of Main Street. There was a lot of great ideas, there was a lot of information that was brought forward, and I think it's in good hands between the Economic Development, the Board of Public Health, which also was represented there, and I think what we're going to do, and I think with the cooperation that I hope that we'll receive from the full Board of Alderman, that we can get a pretty decent slow opening, but get it to do it right, and I think we can open up the downtown, probably will take us a long time to get back to normalcy. I don't use the term "normal," I use the term "typical," and I think in the future we'll be typical of what we came through, and particularly after this pandemic. So I compliment Mr. Cummings for hosting that meeting, I look forward to further meetings to get this to come forward. It's the right way to go, and a slow opening that is prudent for the safety with the virus of opening up our downtown, so thank you, Mr. Cummings.
Anyone else?
Yes, President Wiltshire.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. On the same topics as the previous two speakers, I just wanted to point out that Director Cummings asked me to mention the fact that he is working on legislation to look at putting in takeout parking throughout downtown, which I know was mentioned on the meeting, on that meeting that Alderman O'Brien discussed, and so that is being worked on. There was an intention to have that ready for tonight, but unfortunately, it didn't make it, so, you know, it, for the business owners downtown who are, you know, looking for that, or were expecting that tonight, unfortunately, there was some delays, but we are working on it, and it will be coming forward.
Thank you, Alderman Clemmons. Remarks, anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I've been hearing from an increasing number of parents that their kids are struggling, that they feel like their kids need them now more than ever, they're looking at the end of the school year, they're starting to, by giving them the choice between pass or fail or grades, a lot of the seniors took a good look at their grades and realized that they had issues with GPA, and, you know, they need to pass certain classes, or even that they've been doing really well throughout the year, and they don't want to just pass or fail it at this point. So it's a struggle for parents, and like I said, a lot of, I've heard this phrase over and over again from parents, they, "My children need me now more than ever," and that's a pretty lonely place for a parent to be, so I wanted to share this, that a lot of parents are struggling with this right now, a lot of teachers are struggling, and they're trying to reinvent their entire curriculum, figure out new ways to get this done, and it's very difficult, you guys are not alone in what you're doing. All I can say is, I hope things get better, I hope that, you know, your kids get the best opportunities, but if your kids need you more than ever, and you're there for them right now, that's the best they can get, and that's, that's a good thing, so you guys are in this together, and we're in it with you as well.
I have a comment to.
Alderman, Alderman Gathright, and then Alderman Dowd.
To Alderman Lopez, it is a pass or fail, but they have the option, they can get a regular grade. That was passed by the board.
Right, and that's what I said, it's that actual choice is causing stress for parents, because they're not sure how to navigate it, or what the best decision is, so, kids are making decisions, and parents are making decisions with them that they've never had to before, I think it's very good education as to how grades are constructed, but it's difficult.
I would encourage them to contact those specific teachers that they're concerned about, and if that doesn't work, that they contact administration.
But start with the teachers, they know their kids, and they know their.
Exactly.
Anyone else? Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, just one thing, if, at the next Board of Alderman meeting, we're going to have legislation on the setup for the downtown that will want to be passed with that evening, I would suggest that when a plan is put together, that the preliminary plan, even if it's part of the legislation, be put out to the board so they can review it before that meeting. I'm sure the Attorney Bolton can figure out how to do or not do that, but, and also, once you have a plan, and if you've discussed it with the downtown merchants, can you have some of them, or all of them, I'm sure all of them will, but, provide comments to the board on their, how they feel about the plan, so that we can make a more informed decision.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. The first I heard about this pending legislation was this evening, but it would be my educated guess that if it was to be assigned to the committee, it would probably, might be the Infrastructure Committee if it did involve the parking. So to Alderman Dowd brings up a legitimate point, if it does get assigned to the committee, I will expedite it through the process to have the meeting duly announced and scheduled, and we'll conduct an emergency, I'm willing to conduct an emergency infrastructure meeting if that assists my fellow Alderman to be present, to have that legislation heard in the proper venue, so I'll offer that to the, to be discussed, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Anyone else? Going once, committee announcements. Alderman Tenza.
Uh, so, on that note, I'd ask the members of the P E D C to please look up for an announcement, we're scheduled for a meeting next week on the 19th, that conflicts with Budget Committee meeting, so we're working to find a different night in time where P E D C and Infrastructure can meet together, discuss the issue of downtown, and how to move forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, tomorrow night, we have the Budget Committee meeting, and we'll be addressing Community Development. Director Marchand will be there to present, and then Tuesday, the 19th, we'll have another Budget Committee, and that will be the Board of Education, the largest piece of the budget. And then, the following evening, on Wednesday, at 7:00 PM, we'll have a public hearing on the entire budget that will be held as we're holding this meeting online, but there will be the ability of the public to pose questions directly to the public hearing.
Thank you, Alderman Dowd. Any other committee announcements? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President, I would like to make a motion that the May 12, 2020 meeting of the Board of Alderman be adjourned.
Roll call.
You've heard the motion, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire. You have 14 yeses and 0 nays.
And that motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:34 PM, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.